I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We pledge to stand for our nation under God, indivisible, with due justice, law, and we do have a forum, we do need to adopt an agenda. The only thing that I'd like to add, right underneath, once we adopt this, the next thing, we can do a remote access motion so that Kevin McGee, who is on the GoToMeeting platform, can participate. I believe it's, what, twice a year where he can do this? And this is Kevin's first, so. We'll talk about it. Anybody else have anything we need to add to the agenda? There is a closed session, I see.
Supervisor McGee advised you on January the 6th, 2021, that he will be unable to be physically present for this meeting due to contact with an individual who is believed to have been exposed to COVID-19. For the record, please note that the member is participating from his residence. Accordingly, pursuant to Section 2.4. F of the Madison County Board of Supervisors bylaws and rules of procedure, I move to conduct this meeting electronically in compliance with Virginia Code 2.2-3708.2 and confirm that, A, a quorum of the board is physically present, B, adequate arrangements have been made for the voice of the member to be heard by all in this room.
Second.
First of all, and second, further discussion? If none, all in favor, say a five to say a one. All right, both at the same time. Kevin, you can now participate.
He's on.
Yeah, I told him. All right, all right.
First of all, this needs to be the board to... I told you that the city manager playbook indicates that this ought to be an on-off-campus by independent person. Purpose being to make sure the board's desires are followed through. What you find in some of these public meetings is that whatever the issue of the day is, or whoever's going to take over a meeting, and I don't think you want that with this type of sessions. Start with that. My hope is that you'll work off of this sheet here, although you don't have to, set up some more or less pattern material similar to what Ms. Davis did for you last year in terms of looking back a little bit, talking about goals, what the information is, what's going on in the community, and what really helps me in terms of being the county administrator and the rest of the county staff is if you can identify what's important to the board so we can work off a short list of things. Here again, if we have a short list of things, maybe we can do a few things well as opposed to doing a lot of things not so well. So, I'm not sure what else you want me to say, Mr. Chairman, but we can go to Ms. Jura from last year when she talked about what goals might be, purpose of the meeting and all that.
Is that the list that you gave us that was completed, Paul, that had just one?
That was the outcome from last year.
Yeah.
What I'm talking about is this business about what purpose of the meeting, and this is a little bit different form, but last year we had a new member of the Board of Supervisors. Everybody more or less knows everybody here, so this is less of an issue this year, and not that it wasn't an issue last year. This is more the same, what I just went through. Provide a, I guess, more of a broader picture game plan and what the budget might be. Boss in the weeds, flat out, it's in the budget.
All right. Don't go anywhere. All right. I think we work really well together as a group. Everybody good on that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Team going, checked off. Team on understanding of each individual perspective. Obviously, I feel like we've got that one under control as well. Anybody had a perspective change recently? Kevin? Kevin's with us. Are there any specific issues facing the county? The one that is, I mean, so, so evident currently, we might as well take note on this from the NICO broadband. Broadband has to be more or less already moving forward.
Yeah.
I just can't see no improvement there. You know, we have some capital planning that we need to be doing. We know we need to get this computer system up and running, which seems to be taking shape. Right. Who else got anything?
Hey, let's see. The way we're down there. Yeah, well.
Waiting for you. Just whenever you're ready, shoot from hell.
So, so what I... I've got this list here, and then I shotgunned a bunch of stuff here, too, so y'all bear with me. So, this list, Jack, that says updated per discussion at the January 16th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting? Have we all got that?
We have that on our, yeah, flash.
Okay. So, I went down and looked at those and put a star by the ones that I think we ought to put on this list also. The first one being make necessary changes in the county's ordinances to enable the county's economic development planning and zoning officials to effectively attract business that's ongoing, and we've made progress on that this past year, I think, with the administrative changes that we made to allow the planning department to approve certain things. So, I'm sure there's others. So, the next one, update the purchasing policy and institute improved processes. I think that's going to, that could stay on here, but I think that's going to come along with the implementation of the new accounting system. I think that'll be part of that.
My sense is that's going to be an ongoing thing.
Yeah.
I guess it's a matter of interpretation of what it is, but a lot of that was updated Monday, so.
Okay, with the inclusion.
Ongoing things. In two years, when we get this new financial software, there'll be some...
The processes.
I'm thinking with that, yes.
Right, the processes will take place, yeah.
I'm not saying we're way off base, but there is...
Yeah, because we even saw that during COVID. The bills, no one knows what the procedure is, and then their bills, and that makes your job complicated.
And then under personnel, transitioning emergency services coordinator to full-time, we removed that, correct? That just needs to be removed because John Shera was not interested in doing that, as I understand. The next one, personnel study, that's done. The next three, though, improving administrative and clerical support to assist with peak workflow, cover long-term absences, that needs to go on there again. Improving management services to assist various departments in grant writing, policy research, procurement, in-house document, plan, preparation, project management, et cetera, that needs to stay on there. And just on, to add to that, so, you know, Orange is getting money from various places for broadband and for education and for childcare and this and that. Where are they getting the resources to herd dog that money, Jack? I mean.
I think there's several things going on. First of all, my sense is Madison is a step or two behind because of what happened in 2008, the financial crash and the turnover in order numbers, stats. It's limited what to do. There's also an economy of scale, a much bigger operation, staffing, and different, I guess it's a different period of time. So, ours is everybody works in their department, and it's what to do. We are chasing grants. Brian Gordon just yesterday gave probably open for handheld radio system, so he's, he got some folks helping him, so we go at it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
But for that, for Orange County with the broadband stuff, and Grace, she's going to be able to help people with this, and I can, but they've broadband priority, so they have staff component, they have committees up, they have plans, they have engineering guy. So, that's what the grant agencies want to see. They want to say, if we give you a check today, this will be up and running in six months from here. We're just not ready for a lot of that.
Do we have the resources to carry out stuff like this?
Depends on what you want to do. Getting grants is just not the way, there's just fundamental things that everybody, I guess, state level, Sam, everybody ought to have those anyway. You do get capitalization grants for a few things, revitalization for public safety radios, for broadband, all those sorts of new initiatives. I know back in the day, Sam was passing out money for water and sewer plants to get the Clean Water Act. So, a lot of that's gone away. So, it's, grant's good upon what's needed to get things up and running than other issues. When you're talking about infrastructure. We were forevermore chasing money, say, law enforcement, school resource officers, and all that, because that seemed to be a good thing, and the state and federal government wanted to encourage local governments to hire school resource officers. So, we've gone through that, and maybe we're on the tail end of that, that we have. So, these programs and opportunities come and go, we're just not, for whatever reason, stayed up to speed on some of them.
So, you know, what I was thinking, you know, like, if we had, you know, some money for broadband there, you know, who could we point to this year?
But we had it one time before, but something happened, I can't remember.
They worked really, really hard, came up with a great report.
John, remember Johnson said they couldn't get anybody to meet?
Yeah.
Get together, and so just, so we kind of dissolved.
And Nelson did a similar thing. Nelson now completely, I don't know if y'all have covered that, but I think I sent that to you. I was trying to read into, now everyone has access to Nelson County, but they formed a committee, exactly what you're saying, that's what Nelson just did. And it's all affordable, I think they put a cap on it, a price, a really affordable price. So, yeah, what do we need to do to...
So, do you all, all right, sounds like from Jack, we don't need to consider, you know, hiring a grant?
You already told us to some extent, let's go, on the basis that you said that we needed some clerical support.
I don't know.
And some of that clerical support, did that not roll into that, even if they're not doing the formal allocation of through the information so that you can ask the chain to get it going?
Right, and with, you know, we're, we're, especially, especially the level of staff need to chase grants, where it's what are operating in the department after. Yes, if you could, if we could configure a position that would, grants might not be the priority, but somebody to do some management services in terms of helping procurement, helping departments that don't do a lot of hiring, hiring people because that's time-consuming and specialized thing. More training, we could have better training programs for people across departments. One of the features of Madison organization is that everybody, we operate in these pockets, so not just constitutional officers, but most everybody has their own building, per se. Everybody's situation's different, and so they learn to operate on their own without backup. And so, having somebody like Bruce here for IT, somebody that could come in and make the team piece play as opposed to some operating department having to develop a contractor or somebody in-house that can do that, so these kind of bigger, we can't imagine any individual department. So, the way to go about it will now is to combine some of those into one package. This has been a need for a long while, but it's just my opinion, we had other needs, EMS, IT, things like that, so it's a matter of how fast the work is developed.
Would it behoove us to form a small committee? I mean, not like this 2025 people we had before, that everybody that asked to be on it was on it.
Come on.
Because like you said, if we got a $10 million grant today, we wouldn't know what to do with it, because we don't have anybody.
Broadband authorities, the five of you would be on it, at least in the initial point of it, because that's what's required by law. And then you would be eligible to apply for the state grant and the federal court.
Yeah, that's when all the other counties are...
And I would strongly recommend, I said it last month, reach out to the lady that did it over, Margaret Bond, over in Neathers, and I'm sure she could tell us that. She had all the templates already done.
Okay.
Dislocation point, whether that partnership of Board Supervisors is going to be... What we need are, Sammy County, and they have a broad, long-term view of this to develop some goals and then go back. One of the things you see is not everybody has that instantaneously. There are other places, you mentioned Nelson County, their model is such that they're in the central geni electric, is to agree to provide, be that the broadband provider. We don't have a small provider in these parts to go from on whole power to the actual user. So, that's part of the issue, we have unique problems and trouble in unique communities here to chase. So, yeah, we can look for examples, but the core thing, a good plan, don't have that group of people, it's many members or paid staff or consultants to back it up. And if the board wants to go down this path, can certainly do it, but it's going to take bandwidth in terms of your own time, my time, cash, it's not going to happen on its own.
It does seem like the broadband law, we're going to hear about it in the coming months here. If you're at the maintenance workshop party, they already kind of hold it high. Broadband law, people work, there's a bunch of work on. They've got a bunch of work already, a few related that would make sense that they would be part of this initial broadband committee side of things. I agree with you, it's 25 people, and that's...
That's confusing.
Yeah, that's not confusing. But in the grand scheme, we need to pursue broadband IDA, or not IDA, but broadband authority is what we need to be exact, I think. Maybe that's the direction, we need to form a broadband committee, and then we can move forward with this process and identify where all our options are. The other one, you're still on personnel? Can we come back to personnel?
Oh, yeah.
The only one on personnel, and I just think there's some doubt, but I'd like to see some type of plan, one of the things, if anything, yes. We're watching our constitutional officers do that, you'd be doing it for our internal staff, too, and we should be able to work with others or somebody and see if we can figure out some type of plan, if anything, if that's what's happening. But it was also the minute you were working.
Yeah.
If you can get them motivated to do it, that's the, sometimes.
If we throw the option out there.
Yeah, it's theirs to take, yeah.
So, Jack, you have one who would keep track of everyone's continuing ad, finding their courses?
Well, not only that, but help, so these things are across departments, I mean, things like using Word and Excel. I mean, we could do some things with our work habits when it comes to these, our network and the computers that Bruce could probably help coordinate. We talk about different things, our vendors offer training in the form of procurement. So, there's all sorts of things that are not departmental specific that we can do, it's just, that's one more jumping time.
Yeah.
It's a very good thing, and I definitely want to get around to, but when you come to, it's not on the list of things, you know, we have to put it together.
Yeah, all right. Let's see, got a couple more. I think this one's recent, even resources support assistance for supervisors dealing with personnel issues with the county unit size, that is critical, and I think that we ought to, you know, ask Tilly if either join some more associations like SHRM or go attend some classes so that she can reach out and help these.
She does, she does, 100%.
Yeah.
I continue to, Tilly is where, good idea came from. I have asked her to have something, like, I actually want to do more of the killing, so I just go, no, not really. It's short, so, right on, there you go.
Has she done any, anything, has she?
I don't know. I'm sure she's done some.
Yeah.
And we keep hearing, don't hear anything about Tilly except really good things. I mean, that's, keep going.
So, we've got, none to capital projects, establish an ongoing capital improvement planning program. I think, I think that could be a 10-year program, and if we get some help in, you know, with MJ, I think, oh, you got, you know, as I look at it, you'd go down, you would have all your assets, and you could look at how old they are, be it computers, vehicles, whatever, and you can look at the lifespan of them, and it should not be panic undertaking for those items. Facilities will be a little bit trickier because, as an example, the, with the school population enrollment dropping, if we think it's going to continue to drop, then there's some facility decisions that are going to have to be made down the road. Some we might not need anymore, but anyhow, I think I need a 10-year CIP plan. And then on the IT, I kept all three of those in there, which I think they will come to fruition, probably a lot of it in calendar 2021, create a records management system, in-house information technology capability for coordination and replace the accounting software. So, they're the ones that I pulled off of last time, but so about half of the ones we had on there last time got, I think ought to stay on there, probably.
I know a lot of, a lot of the ones that are on here are currently in process.
Right.
Capital planning, few specific items that we know, liquidation of growth. And we got living expenses going, but it seems to be that we're even right before you were. We're buying up computers, so some of our inventory is actually looking a little bit better. Management, other would be helpful, so we don't, like, how many, how many computers will be five of them?
Last time?
Yeah. Yeah, it's to be comparable.
At once, yeah, it ought to be staged.
Absolutely. Like, when you're starting to do an inventory and stuff.
Yeah, I've got pretty good handle on what's, what's out there right now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's slowing down now because of the care's money that's now, everybody's...
I think we've accomplished a lot, so we are kind of more up to date than where we were, for sure. Then the also the liquidation of revenue, too. Hopefully, Brian Bell is going to take those, and that's a building, all right. Anything else, anything you want to add? Kevin? Anything you want to add?
I'm going to hear it.
Yes? All right, all right. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I do, so that was off of that list, I'm sorry, but I did shotgun a few other things, you know, real quick. So, you know, I stole and say, okay, okay, boys, what do we need? Cell phone coverage, of course, cell phone coverage, cell phone coverage. And then I talked to Brian Gordon about the tower that's going on, that is still in the works up there, and he was saying that that might be a challenge because it's, it's an island, it can't reach out far enough to touch other cell phone towers, so cell phone company may be hesitant to do it. But anyhow, you know, that broadband and cell phone coverage is obviously, needs to be looked at, or, you know, building for the EMS rescue squads on there, need to find a doctor. I don't know how much we can do about that. You know, some of these things that people...
You got a doctor?
We got a doctor.
She's been Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yesterday?
Yeah, she's a pain's check cashing.
What's that?
Pain's check cashing.
Okay.
Fanny Ford, Fanny Ford Oates, you know who she is?
So, she is a...
She's a nurse practitioner.
You can collaborate at practice now if you have five years, I guess.
Okay, good, good. Yeah.
Got a big one there, everybody's...
Oh, let's see. Oh.
She makes house calls, they make house calls, that's their...
Which has not the power. Keep going.
Yeah, I mean, I've, there's a lot of things that people say they need in Madison, and I can't figure out how we can help it directly, like, we need a laundromat, we need another fast food establishment, you know, all that, all that kind of stuff, like...
Things that would be nice to lift, yeah, to have a few...
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a laundromat, that's, that's really tough on some people. But here's one, or actually, two more. We have, what's that?
A laundromat, that's available.
So, there...
I have a lot of people, yeah.
The one in town that works, I mean, there's one in town.
Is it still going?
Dry cleaners, you talk about...
Oh, a dry cleaner?
Uh, both.
Yeah, we sell the machine, we don't have a dry cleaner.
Oh, okay, I did not know that.
Yeah, the president said nip it next.
Are they closed? There was some kind of disaster, laundry mat's back on the list, keep going.
A laundromat. Here's, here's a, here's a strange one, and it's got to do with childcare, and I bring that up because I'm in, I'm involved with Skyline Cal. I'm in, I'm involved with Skyline Cap and, you know, we have the Head Start program. And a lot of their kids after care, so the parents can go to work. Then you've got the learning center up there, you've got schools, you've got Boys and Girls Club, and then you've got aunts, uncles, and brothers and sisters.
So. What's what's a small part of?
Yeah, and the right, that's right. Now, Culpeper Wellness Foundation donated that building. Up there at the south end of town for the learning center. And of course, COVID right now is is limiting the number of of uh. Of customers, which is making it real tough. But I've I've had the opportunity to look at that place over a number of years. And without the collaboration of Boys and Girls Club, the schools, and the learning center, I don't think it can stand alone. Um, so. I was talking to Nan Koppidge about maybe, you know, if we could. If Skyline could initiate some sort of group that can get together and and get involved with schools and stuff. To see what kind of collaboration we come up with that would. That uh serve all the kids that need.
Especially before now.
And affordable.
Uh, and affordable.
That's the problem is with the early learning center, it's too expensive. I mean, for me, it's.
Correct.
And the problem, Boys and Girls Club before COVID, they were at their limit. That space will no longer hold. The the amount of demand that they need. They can't accept any more children.
Right.
And then private babysitting is so expensive. I mean, you know, it's impact at the early learning centers.
Yeah, so suffice it to say, I think childcare in this county needs to be discussed and and I could. Get Skyline probably to head up something like that and. You know, and and talk about it. Um, and then the last thing I've got, uh, the career and technical education in Madison. Uh, I heard Barry, uh, Penn Holler, uh, Schoolboy Meeting. He was, he was mentioning that he'd like to see more money put into CTE. I couldn't agree more. I think it's critical for this county especially.
Absolutely.
For career and technical.
I mean, Green County has a really nice one. Culpeper's, theirs is about finished, I think. Start. I don't know what Orange does.
Orange is getting ready to build one. They bought that building, right?
They've been talking about that for a year.
Okay, supposedly purchased the building on twenty, on Route twenty. That they were going to convert into.
But see, Mr. Chairman, you know, I I have this list here, but I don't know. I can't figure out how to get it on this list and how the board.
I mean, some of what's your. Some of the things in your address, I'm used to drive to you. Um. That's economic development. And like you already said about the changing of some ordinances to make things easier for business. I think in a lot of cases, this current board, primarily assisted by the staff. Crazy does a great job, Ligon's doing a great job, Hava doing a great job. I mean, just keep on going. Uh, when businesses come to Madison County, it's what can we do for you? What can we make the job easier? Um, we all watch the planning commission. As individuals go to bat for Mr. Winland out there. Um. I think we tried to do the same when it pertained to uh the Madison buying deal. The free market has a big player in that, but it tends to. Dial up here, I don't know. And I have. We hear it's an issue constantly, but I do have some reservations on that. Give them, what was it, fifteen thousand dollars on the front row and door slash.
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Um. That that has been a long time. Um, that needs to be investigated and that needs to be sorted back out. They can be viable. Um, the other one about the CTE, which is exceedingly important, and we've seen the success of that, but isn't that more of a school or a club field? Or is that something that where you want to school implement more?
No, I I have a feeling they are going to put. Funds there in this coming budget, so. Um, yeah, I guess it would just us to.
And currently, they're doing CTE.
They are.
Building trade steel. Um, they finally found a halfway decent ag teacher, uh, which, thank God. Uh, not with a heart that that was fixed, but uh. Then they're also partnering with some of the private sector. Uh, we know one was into a. Um, I think Bronny Lambrecht may use and work with them. Um. That's the Mrs. Taylor, so.
Get the business.
There's there's some that I think partnered with Amber at one time.
Yeah.
And we see that they did, I think they've worked with others as well. Uh. What do you want to prioritize in party? I mean, what, uh, that's, I I did agree with you. This town.
Let's see.
Y'all want to go down to the survey?
Oh, yeah.
Just came out. The anonymous survey, get the anonymous survey.
Mm hmm.
I mean, you should obviously be on the survey. Um, um. I mean, how would you like to see Madison County evolve over the next decade? Better internet, cell phone service. Obviously, that is something that people. Going to everybody's mind.
Yep.
Uh. We need to retain rural characteristics, attract small business. Um, um. Need to see some of the non, non-real estate tax revenue second. Um, we should be trying to incentivize some of these. I think we just did incentivize, well, twice recently. One, we passed the letter, we authorized Ligon to pass the letter on the tax credits for the uh living from housing. Which is economic development, even though it also claims housing. Also, we just did the uh the medical uh. Um, at the lace factory, second letter.
And revelations.
And revelations, exactly, exactly. Um, revelations. There was work put in on it, but that's a lot of private. You guys want to? Um, everybody wants to see Madison retain, remain rural. Um.
You can't have it all.
Can't have it all.
You just can't. You're either going to have business or you're going to have nothing.
But it is overall. I mean, we still, we are definitely protecting the role.
I I think I've told a lot of. Um, potential discussion format for tonight's meeting. Um, they don't want uh. For the long-term viability of forming. And I I know a little bit about this. Um, is that agriculture is changing. Based on our location, our geography, I don't think that we're going to be like, I don't know, Fairfax. Um, it's just changing, which is different. I've seen with a lot of the small, small family farms that operate or. Medium-sized family farms are kind of going out and seeing a lot of smaller farms come in that adapt to. Uh, the biolocal market place, which is terrific. Um, I'm seeing the other side. I've heard a lot of those. Farms that are going out are getting absorbed by bigger entities and they're getting bigger and bigger and bigger. They're a handful of very, very big ag operators. They'll be a very tough place. I don't talk about it. Um, our location, I think we are going to continue to see absentee landowners. Um, which turns out is good for Madison County in a lot of ways because they require very few services. Um, they don't have kids in schools. They're putting in that. Um, they need to provide access. Tax basis for. Providing revenue on that one.
So those those absentee landowners renting their land to our farmers and they, for the most part.
Yes. And what else?
Yeah, okay, good. Because what I, what irritates me to death is to have somebody, an absentee landowner. That, you know, comes in here and buys fifteen or twenty acres, puts a goat out there to roam around, and then claims land use or whatever.
Yep.
Now, Brian Daniels. Brian Daniels has done a really good job. Everybody wants to talk about the use of of land use. Uh, Brian has. Done a good job. People that were grazing, just a specific answer, but are grazing cattle, heard slowly, were selling. Four miles of hay for over that thousand dollar threshold. Not letting that happen. Making sure that it's straight. We've got. Going back to the state regs, like you should, making sure that they are qualified for. Um, when Brad Jarvis talks about his conservation, they qualify immediately.
Yes.
That's that's one of the absentee's. But I mean, look up there in Graves Mill, we've seen some very, very large farms turn over. Um. Ralph or the Lord of Drummond, I don't know what he's doing, but I think he's probably be okay no matter what. Um, the other one is where they can harbor, that's a massive tract of land that is now back inactive after all. I've seen, I I get to see a whole lot of farms going out, maybe some laid up lies ten years. Some people smaller, some people.
Yeah, on the employment side, Clay, I think.
Employment, yeah.
That um you can do, one person can do so much now. Um, where you used to have, used to employ, employ three or four. I mean, I've got a cousin towards Eastern Shore. He he farms twelve hundred acres by himself, but it's all cash costs. By himself.
The employment factor is a big one. Yeah, it's where we need to be working on this economic development. Because we do hear, I've got to make some notes on it. Um, we do hear that we need to provide jobs for local people. And that is definitely positive. I make some notes on it. Some people need to get out and see the world a little bit and they fully realize. How brave it is here.
Mm hmm.
Um. Come back and do the thing. I think I could probably help your families back to Madison. Recently. Thirty, right after forty. Great. Um, there's certainly employees. That also goes back to. On IT, we must figure out a way to do this broadband thing. People are reliant on. Internet connectivity, not just in the COVID environment. Um. For economic development, I'd like to see some control of growth. Actually, done fairly well on some control of growth.
Yeah.
Um, we, the focus on putting trees on twenty nine and spite of warehouse mountain. Um, the line line residents up there, that is a big one. Kevin McGee's twenty nine corridor study plan. Focus is directly on that. Uh. We're pushing people that direction. Lady called that lady that wanted to put the uh dog kennel up there on Port Alton. Now she's on twenty nine. Emperor Business is expanding.
Doing well.
Which is great. Um. Maybe even a larger. So we need just a, I think that's a general guess here. Um. And everybody's on the internet here. Um, everybody likes rural. All right. It's all sort of racist. Um. Kevin, you got anything?
I listen.
All right, guys, good, good. Um. I think the thing that I probably don't do. As well as like maybe should, trying to do something on when it comes to economic development in the town. I know. I know that economic development, the town is run by the town council. Um. Maybe we should try to figure out how to work with them in a way that incentivizes a little bit economic development downtown. Live these streets through.
Yeah, they are.
Good for it.
Madison's got the same street lights, the same everything. When I came here in nineteen fifty nine, nothing changed.
They replaced them all with L A D.
Yeah, yeah, that's a little bit, yeah. I mean, it looks just as dismal. Nothing's been changed.
Um.
All right. Here's one for you, Charlotte. So on page ten of this this survey, uh, new sewage treatment plant, somebody wants. So here we go. So.
They have a a grant to study Madison.
And that's ongoing, that's.
Yeah, I I don't know if they've started, but I know they have the grant to study it. So, you know, something could become future.
Need to talk to you guys more often. I'm finding out all kinds of shit stuff.
Yeah. Is is that, I want to say, that's a grant?
Yes, sir.
What do you say?
I say that has the grant.
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah.
Hey, yes, I want to say that's the grant.
And you know, that could change the county good and bad.
No question. Is. Governor's hooked up to our, Yoder's is not hooked up to our septic.
No, water they have, sewer, they have their own septic. And Sheetz has their own septic system.
People brought this up for years about the uh. Uh, the septic, we need septic for all the buildings. Does Wyman have septic?
He will not.
So that's all.
He he bought that land, he doesn't have it. He bought, he bought that land from Carlisle, though, didn't he? Did Carlisle?
Not on that side.
He has all the taps, right?
I mean, Carlisle's attached for the horrible housing.
Yeah, yeah.
It would seem that when it pertains to economic development and small business specifically and some large industries. Um, not just box stores. Box stores are a different breed. Um. Sewer or sewer treatment is not always, I mean, they always seem to figure out solutions around it. Uh, Yoder's is doing just tremendous, tremendous business out there. Our condolences to.
Yeah.
Passing.
And Sheetz has their own, constant trouble with it, but they have it, you know. They have, have to have their own.
Uh, the Wyman property, they have somebody that's in the waiting, waiting for one of the lots. I'm sure that they thought about the septic. Um. I know R S A has always been very gracious in telling us that they will build us one immediately.
Well, no.
It sounds reasonable.
Well, now, from what I can understand, the study that they would pay for.
With the grant.
Hmm. Sounds good. Um, this.
Then, you know, they might, they might ask for something from us, but I don't think it'd be anything tremendous.
Um, what are some of Madison's county's pressing issues? We're great. We need for additional revenue. And then there's lack of retail in this fourth quarter. Kind of a dull basis there. Um. I don't think many people know about it, but we do have uh, that's mental health is giving the rats deal at the. How's that going?
Good.
Good. Good. Um. We need to be working with Tim on that retail deal.
You know, their grants, I mean, look what Culpeper did. Their, oh, their Davis.
Pushes tax money.
Yeah.
Uh, small town uh remodel.
I mean, that's a vibrant, that's a vibrant place.
The grants that Tracy have, it was here to get Main Street project. Something like that, but that's how they updated a bunch of things.
There were a lot of times I had those iced tea drinks. Like orange hat, I know, I don't know if Madison had them or not. But that was what it was for, it was to rebuild. The sheets.
And the thing is, we can bring as many businesses or entrepreneurs can open businesses, but it's locals who have to support it for them to be a viable business. You can bring as many, you can flood Main Street, but if you're not supporting them, they're going to go out of business. I mean, it happens time and time again, believe me, I know myself. So it kills me when people say that. So it kills me when people say that, but then you don't come and support your local business, so.
And you know, that's the thing with Culpeper on Davis Street, because I work with so many yuppies that go down there. I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's the thing, and they don't wait for tourism for that. I mean, the local people support that.
Support it, yeah. Exactly.
I want to do this survey. I could get some, two initiatives or three initiatives. We need internet and cell phone. We need economic development, make that an easier process, any way we can. Um. We need, and then we need to do some capital planning on our side. Um, we know that we're working on this complex here. When I say this complex, I mean, not just wherever the address is here, four, what are you, four fourteen? Uh, yes, but also the health department, that'll, that's coming around. Uh, that also means getting rid of the grip. Um, but then also the one, when everybody's behind it, is this E M S goal. That's a big one for us. You know about a ten year man, probably two years out from doing something, but maybe make your faster than that.
So would it be reasonable that we have a plan in place for it by the end of this year?
Yes, yes, sir.
So we definitely put that on there to have the plan ready, huh?
And how about development, maybe maybe the facts of the clerical support, part of the position that we can have down from different departments that we will call. Odds has capitalized on that. We had that one young man, was it Alan? We had Alan, and then we've got another lady. There are, wait, what's one other image, Charlotte? Nope. Angie, there you go. So I mean, we're already doing this. Maybe that's something in the budget being approached.
Yeah, did we have anything in the budget last year for, for that? Jack, do you remember?
We're four line clerical. We had, we had some part-time money.
Nominal amount.
I guess what happens in the case of their true, if they can position any. With my, my, I guess my idea, I give the chase is to develop part-time person that can afford between the departments. It's important to have, bring somebody in and get them to speed. We had somebody that we have, well, right now you need it here, but you know, when something happens, which we can, now, but there is a welcome of the cultural element there and having our different share.
But that's gonna have.
Here's your assigned department, that's where you are.
Oh, good. You said part-time. How bad does it sound, but I'm almost in five percent of it, we need somebody full-time, it will be dynamic enough to be able to announce them all over, and there's always what's needed.
Always shorty.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Um, and the reason, and then our IT side of things with the, with the updated, um, accounting software, the R P system, um, and then Livingston here is, uh, is IT inventory. That's, that's a big one. I mean, that's something that we have done very poorly for a very long time. God, moving in the right direction now, finally.
I don't know, so I have, in hands, it's coming really soon.
You hear that, Kevin? You didn't even hear that. Um, real problem.
Speed internet to here, four ten.
Um. All right, where else would you go here, Hobbs?
Let's see.
Um. It, it's brought up here on a couple of different sides. Um, I guess we probably should talk about it. But we really don't know where we're at, frankly, um, when it pertains to charity money. I know we all, for us, I guess. Um, and it helped us out in a lot of ways. Um, we saw the email from Hobbs a couple of weeks ago about how it kind of put, put us in the, put us in the right direction, taking a good cash position. But we need to be thinking about how we're going to continue this kind of deal. And I, and I don't know if that's something that needs to be on the polls for us. Um, supporting John Shearer, um, terrific work he's done, a bit odd, um, part-time. Um, what do we need to say on both in pandemic out?
We don't need to forget that we're still in this state of emergency, and whether, um, pitches, projected to peak in terms of number of cases in mid-February, and, and hopefully the vaccine will kick in until we get to this herd immunity, whatever. We're, we're still in it, so we don't need to be whetted up in any way. Question keeps being asked, what else could we do? And talking about, well, we can close getting offices, and what would that really do for us? Or, um, do we need to stop having these group meetings, and what would that really do? Um, just to give you an exemption, it got past me, but, uh, the COVID leave thing expired at the end of December, and so, well, gee, should we extend that, recommend the ward extended or whatever? Because here before, that was a mandate. So what we came to as well, what we're gonna do is, we've got a good model in terms of department head thinks there's a problem, call John Shearer, who knows what's going on, consult, or send somebody home because it's a COVID problem, just pay them administrative leave. If they need to stay home because they're, they think their kid might be sick or whatever, that's.
That's all they have.
That's other leave. So we just have to play through it, but it's, it's almost every week, something like that comes up. I, you know, who knows what's gonna happen next week? But the point is, that this pandemic thing, it is on the priority list, we're gonna recognize.
I think what's gonna happen, you love, you love it. Uh.
No, it's me, we're gonna be here.
Well, yeah, that's, that's kind of why I was inquiring, uh, what, from John, if he sent out that letter to the world, which I see he did, yeah.
He shared it a trillion times on Facebook.
Good.
With positive responses.
That's what we need to do. Uh, oh, I guess John was a little hesitant, or didn't initially send it out to, to everybody because he didn't know whether it was appropriate to do so or not. So, um, do, running through Jack and.
Clay and Dan, he, he controls with Noah and Brian, so they, John's got it together.
If John Shearer doesn't have.
He does. Did not answer.
Within, I mean, if he doesn't have the answer within a couple minutes, you give your call. John, um, I, I couldn't say a bad thing about John Shearer.
He's, he's on it.
And, and that's what I'm trying to get all these folks that are, you know, after me about this, have y'all got a plan? Yeah, uh, his name is John Shearer to start with, so.
Okay, yeah.
That's good.
Um, the, the other one, I thought, thought back to facility planning and capital planning, major ones, there's no, plenty of here shortly, parking lots and paving.
Oh, yeah.
The schools, we know have, and when I say the schools, I'm sure the rest of them need paving too. Um, of course, uh, the biggest one is the primary school, uh, which looks like we're going good, we're starting the planning process, um, but looks like your capital expense in twenty-two, the summer of twenty-two, rating and everything. Um. We knew we got some funding, but it's insane. I think Hobbs brought up multiple times, I think it is, right, the right way to look at it, maybe we do a whole bunch of paving at once, to try to capture some of that economy to scale. And that's a good one. It's gonna be very expensive.
Yeah.
Um, all right.
Take it right here.
Yeah.
We got, we got an email I just got from John Shearer.
Yeah.
You wanna do your meeting? Can Zach come out of V D A? Please note that Governor Northam has issued a state of emergency in response to the Commonwealth's support, the activities currently occurring in Washington, D C. There are no known issues in Region Two or Region Seven, Northern Virginia at this time. But it goes on to say, uh, remain vigilant, and keep, keep everybody informed, and we'll do the same. So we're in another state with emergency, of the, of Washington, D C.
What's going on in D C?
The Capitol?
He's in more.
But your focus is in Brown.
So this, this is kind of, and John, John forwards us to, to, we. Get, get it, get, it gets filtered before it gets to us, but we hear what's.
I wonder why Northam would call the state of emergency in Virginia.
Yeah.
He's in the National Guard.
Yeah, they.
And they already shut down.
He's in the National Guard.
And at six P M, everyone's supposed to be inside.
Yeah.
But all, all, all the.
Oh, but not Virginia.
Are in Northern Virginia Hotel.
Oh, yeah.
So they're in Virginia.
Yeah.
Um, what? I, I, we talked about John Shearer, he replaced him. Remember, we, we are, one of the big things for John Shearer's position, we're gonna work easily, not being this overbearing weight, um, on all the different, from EMS to, to the fire, and then to the county side, and it was such a hot topic, John Shearer, ever, never at all, like, he's like, what can we do now? Uh, and that, I mean, just.
Yeah, that's his, yeah, that's his attitude.
No, I was just looking at this list that, that Jack put together, potential C Y twenty-one matters, kind of goals and priorities, and I don't know, most, a lot of the stuff I said already, he's already got it on here. Uh, yeah, I was going down that list.
On, on this list that we got, that Hobbs got here, this one to seven list.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's the, uh, potential C Y twenty-one mass, any goals and priorities, twenty-one, oh, one, oh, three. What does that have to do with Hobbs? When it comes to the facilities, I do think we chat parking lots, I guess a big one for us. Um. The broadband deployment for Madison, I think, I think we probably should put down we need broadband authority, development of a committee, movement force, and authority. And throw this off on. I kind of think of broadband itself, and it's just like, it's.
Yeah.
It's all flopped together.
I. They tie them, you want them dead. They're tied.
In some cases they are, but in some it's not, like right now, I'm, I, I gotta go Orange next week, the side of the East, but we're actually running fiber down my driveway at my house, I got up there. Um, so there, they're running fiber in.
What you're leaving Culpeper?
I did, but I got a house in Orange that I ran out. But, um, the difference is Orange doesn't have all the.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess an answer to your question is, yes, that's how a lot of people get their internet now. The things, whatever a group needs to work through is, do we go with the interim step of having wireless from again, straight to the end goal, which is wireless to everybody's house.
Somebody brought up that training, I think it was, uh, I think it may have been traced. Oh. They already see you may have tapped into some of this stuff, there may be an announcement.
Right.
But they also have a lawsuit. Oh, yeah. That's the deal, that's the deal, lawsuit with the easements, that's the, that is, Culpeper, that's super interesting, though. Um, but if they can figure out the lawsuit deal, that may be, that's possible. Um.
Yeah, so, so on this one, we're, number two, promote broadband deployment, establish goals and organize, I, I switched it around, say organize and then establish goals, because the organize and it, from the planning commission the other night is, what you would, we would set up a committee to how we were going to set up the authority, is that?
Yeah, that's what.
Right, that's what they're. So it's.
We need to, and everybody's very, very aware of it, thinking, some of us on there, money side's always a big player. Um, there's not unlimited funds to grow that internet. At least, they have million of these, some of these.
Sound great.
Um, I mean, there is big money.
And then we gotta pay the lease cost on.
I mean, it's, it's big money that these people.
And we can talk to the other board supervisor, couple in Orange, I'd call Nelson, you know, and see, I mean, any help we can get.
All right. Um.
And says, my best internet is exclusively cellular based.
It's funny, so you say people are using their cell phones to get internet. I'm in Etlin, I use my internet to get my cell phone. I got hooked to my Wi-Fi.
Um. Um, all right, where else would you go, Hobbs? What else were you missing? Um. I liked your one to seven list.
Yeah.
But we need to, I don't have on there that Mr. Gal went through.
Well, let's see.
Take it with us somewhat, and then bring it back to discussion, and then we need to put the timeline on.
Oh, where, you're under six, you have human resource support, um, and that, I think, pertains one to Tilly, uh, specifically, but then also, uh, to the, uh, what was that? The, maybe you would, what, the continued, or the.
Good.
That service, the, the.
Sha.
Was it additional?
This is training.
Yeah, if not tonight, we talked about it before, uh, Christmas and all, way back in COVID, um, we were talking about getting it for like mental health for our.
Oh, yeah.
And. Um, shouldn't we add that, or maybe we should add a number to it? Um, talk about this kind of transitional surge person, as a full-time position? You know what I mean? We're tapping into, I can, free, I'm a pretty clear time clerical, but that's really not a very good way to define it, we're already doing that, but I'm, full-time person, it is. Where you put that person based on department structure is complicated and, it's unchallenged. And what, what else you haven't talked, anything, just a little?
No.
All right. Tracy's listening as well.
I'm guessing.
She, I'm sure she's listening, probably trying to understand what we're talking about, but then also, uh, that comment about the stuff, we need to be asking her, I mean, and she does, I mean. Your end up.
Is that your phone, please?
Yeah. Uh. All right, what else?
And, uh, again, my goal is to get the, you know, one sheet of fine goals, and we'll refine it. I guess what's indicated is to work with Mr. Gal to, to, to. I'm trying to articulate some of these things, but.
Yeah, I was looking.
You gonna work off of this one to seven?
Yeah, that's a good start, yeah.
I did, uh, I liked the report that we started with, um, that showed what we had accomplished, I said, we, and that, had actually accomplished, um. and where we missed it, but I don't even look at a lot of things, just work in progress.
Yes, I think that's quite an accomplishment right there.
And we know that the, uh, renovation of this complex came in a little bit over where we thought the budget should have probably been done. Done actually fairly well with some of this stuff lately. I mean, that school project is going just forever. Um.
When will that be completed?
Not too long, not too long, the school project. Well, there will be the school project. Be sooner or later. I mean, they.
April, I guess.
They started ordering. I mean, we got another one tomorrow. Um, they started ordering furniture. And we, we pre- was four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars furniture. I was going where the, the walls are up, the dry rock up. And walking through there, and that was before the drywall was up. I see that. They have done a great job, meaning design, blow. It's just good. They've done a good job.
Yeah.
It's something that, it's not a spaceship, it's something that will last for.
Yeah, that's all, that's all Clay used to tell me. Do not make this look like a spaceship.
You should have seen that, man. We all follow a spaceship. I'm telling you, it's just unbelievable. They showed us some of these designs, I'm like, no, we're not going with that. Uh, and they're sitting there all proud of themselves. Uh.
Jack, Jack, when will they start on this?
Um, they, they, we signed the contract and they were supposed to mobilize on, I think that their view mobilize means they start calling vendors to get. Um, they, they said we should start hearing voices down there next week. Wow. It's all in their court. Um.
Finally, after forty years.
They, I'm talking with Bruce now, they've got a, um, wiring for the internet. That looks like that's the biggest schedule risk right now is having the, that building, the old, let the internet ready for when the move is supposed to happen. Early mid-March.
We'll have to call Jimmy Gray's, tell him to come down here and watch him do something.
We ain't done it there. We can eat different duck. Um. I've heard of one group in this facility, and they were currently working this offering on, we had a good first meeting with them. Um, we're gonna do another meeting this upcoming week, looks like we're gonna do a couple of tours, which will be helpful for me at least. Uh, some surrounding jurisdictions. One, John Sheer brought up, John Sheer, Brian Gordon, Brian's already sent back an email with different things that he's got as critiques, um, of the original Sonic currently. Um, the thing John and Brian both brought up was the EOP room. Uh, I've heard it's got, uh. Apparently where we've been meeting to do the budget, deal up there in the fire station is the current EOP room. And I did a great job when they put it all in, thank, thank them for letting us use their facilities. Um, but when we toured the one up in Culpeper, it was set up in a more modern fashion. Um, and that's probably gonna be something that we need to address in this new EMS facility. User general training of people and, which is great, um, but also based on current, just plug and play. How are you?
Yeah.
All right. Let's gather your loose calls and there we go. Pretty good. Anything else we need to do on this front side?
Uh, that's the knife and I will.
Very powerful. Yes, sir. Thank you.
So is the, um. Is this memorandum gonna, is the planning commission gonna discuss this tonight there?
Understood that they wanted, uh, Peter Work and Mr. Prince Wong.
To give up.
Presented for the board.
Okay.
And I think there's actually a memo from Mike Moscow to the board, commission recommends us. Should be in your package.
Hey.
I, uh.
They did a good job.
They did. They did a good job. It's, there's a lot of history and a lot of background. The effort for broadband in Madison County and the areas right around Madison County. Um, that remains that every, every local government is different in terms of attitude, where they are in terms of evolving toward the internet, where they have a population that wants broadband, and I think we, of course, the pandemic has exposed us there. Everybody knows we need it now, it's supposed to, or we worked two years ago. Kind of ready.
Gavin, you got anything? The owner of the research for a couple of.
Yep.
Yes, and they also.
Yep, up here.
Gavin, we'll be back to your sub.